Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Cabarrus County Board of Education meeting for December the, I mean for January the 5th, 2015 is now called to order. Our first order of business tonight will be just to take a moment. Let's take a moment of silence for Ryan Beckett, an eighth grader at Winkler Middle School. We lost him over the holidays and I know it's tragic for that school as well as his parents and his family, so let's bow our heads for just a moment. Also, before we get started, I'd like to acknowledge Officer Larry Hunter from Royal Oaks. Thank you, Mr. Hunter, for coming out tonight and being with us and protecting us. He does a wonderful job over there at Royal Oaks and they're much better off having him there. Thank you. Let's go ahead, board members, and set the agenda. I don't need a motion to set our agenda.
So moved.
All right, Mr. Fur.
I'll second that motion.
Ms. Carpenter. All right, all in favor of the agenda as written? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right, motion's carried. The agenda is set for us to review. Now, Ms. Klutz will be probably late tonight. She's at the Board of Commissioners meeting and so we will, if you don't mind, we will move her budget process report and her budget amendments report until she does arrive and we'll just table those until she comes in at whatever point that is. Let us move forward to subject 4.02, School Resource Officer, the memorandum of understanding. Dr. Lauter, if you would.
Yes, I'll just start and I'll let Mr. Enriquez jump in here if he wants to. I think when the contracts came up for our resource officers, what was discussed was to kind of separate those from the financial part with the contract and then also come up with a memorandum of understanding for the resource officers. And I think some of that came from maybe some information or conference that Mr. Enriquez went to for recommendations for that. And so largely or almost entirely, Mr. Enriquez wrote the memorandum of understanding. And my role in this really was just to go back and forth with the police with some questions they have, but I'll just defer to Mark. I think it's primarily his document.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. This did stem from a conference I attended dealing with the role of school resource officers and really some suggestions to help spell out the respective roles of the school system and the school resource officer. And I, they had a model memorandum of understanding that had been used in some other districts that I started with and we made a few revisions and then we got some comments back from our sheriff's department and police department that made those revisions as well. So that's really where this document comes from. And a lot of it is stuff we've been doing all along. It really memorializes it and, you know, the suggestion is let's get it clear in terms of what the respective roles are so that everyone understands. So I think it's consistent with what we've been doing, but it documents in a way to distinguish the respective roles of the school folks and the SRO. And I'm happy to answer questions or discuss specific provisions with any of the board members.
All right, board members, are there any comments or questions on this document? All right. Mr. Walter.
Thank you.
Try this one, okay. Yeah, I looked through this and I just had a couple of questions on it that, does this replace what we currently have and have? Is that, what is this?
We don't, we don't actually have a, we have the contracts, but we don't have a memorandum of understanding. So it's not, it is new. There really isn't, again, it's kind of documenting a lot of the practices that have been in place, but it's not, there is no existing MOU.
Okay, so the other two, these other agreements, how many others, how many other agreements are there?
What we had before are the, just the contracts that kind of talk about the fiscal responsibility that we brought before the board. We've had those for a number of years that kind of spell out what we'll pay for and what they'll pay for. But that's been the only document that's been executed regarding SROs until now.
And those are, here it's called a separate service contract? Is that what they're called?
Correct, exactly.
Okay.
And those, as you may recall from the last time we looked at them, kind of detail how many officers, what grade level, how much we're paying. And the idea is that may change, this obviously can be amended too, but that may change from year to year as funding comes in or we add schools. The goal would be to have an MOU that's kind of a umbrella document that will stay relatively constant, again, subject to changes that we want to make or the SROs want to make. But this will govern, and it's, the other thing that I think is good from us for a school perspective, it's the same MOU signed by sheriff's office and the county. As you know, we have some SROs that are police officers with the city of Concord, some that are with the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Office. So our school administrators now can have the same MOU and the same understanding regardless of whether the school is located in the city or the sheriff as opposed to kind of two contracts that could potentially be different or inconsistent.
Okay, I'm just trying to keep track of that because there's also another section here that talks about contracts for after-school activities and sporting events and things like that. So do we have, those are individual contracts per the school or is that for us or is that...
And Mr. Lauter may be able to answer the details, but what we basically is allowed a provision, I know sometimes they've used SROs at ballgames or other things that are outside of their SRO, we're just noting that those are separate contractual arrangements. But you're right, my understanding is that would vary school by school and it's something that would be done individually with those SROs to cover a particular event or a particular series of events. And that will differ, elementary schools may not have any after-school coverage, high schools might have.
But a sporting event or something to that effect, that's an agreement.
That'd be typical and I don't know, I'd ask Mr. Lauter, I don't know if there are things other than sporting events that we would use SROs for.
Dances, anything that, where there's a crowd, again, I was a high school principal. At a high school, anything that has more than about 50 students, usually we have police coverage just in case there's a problem. And school makes that decision because, I think I used as an example in safety earlier at the beginning of the season, we may only need three officers, but if we win 10 games in a row and we're playing, you know, a rival, then suddenly I may double my officers because we're going to have 1,500 more fans. And so school makes that on a week-by-week decision based on, you know, what's popped up.
So is that a separate contract each week or is it under some type of other agreement?
It's not a specific contract that I know of, but the way I understand, I know Ms. Klutz isn't here, is we have an agreement so the school ultimately says, I need four officers and then they pay for them each week. So I don't think there's a, there's a contract, but they're available and that's part of what they know that they're going to be covering. So usually the school sits down and tries to say, hey, here's the 25 events that we're going to have for the next couple of months, here's where we need coverage. And then let's say there's some kind of a rivalry situation that pops up, then they'll say on Monday, hey, we really need a few more officers on Friday night and they make that decision based on what's, what's happening.
In that case, they may not be SROs, they may just be law enforcement.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Most of the time they ask, we want the SRO there, but sometimes they can't be there and in a football game we'll have the SRO and, you know, eight other officers depending on the game.
Okay, just looking through a couple of questions that I had through here. As far as communication, it talks a lot about communication with issues for the principal, but it doesn't talk about, doesn't necessarily address talking to you or your title, it comes up towards the end here a couple of times, but specifically how does that interact? I thought that you're one of the first people that has contacted when there's an issue.
Yes, I don't know how Mark would answer that, but I'm definitely the liaison for the district. So whenever the principal says, hey, we had this issue we need to talk about with the police, or the police say, we had an issue at this school, each of them calls me and then I have a contact with the sheriff's department and I have a contact with the police department. And so I don't know how formal that is, but that's how it works and it certainly has been, we have a great relationship with both and that's normally how we play that out.
So maybe we need to put something about a liaison in here somewhere? I'm not sure exactly where, but that. Some of the things we did over the summer with the SROs, as far as the active shooter drills and the other training things, this might be a good, good place to incorporate that on, you know, we'll make certain facilities available every summer for that type of an event or that type of practice or, because if you read through the training, it really doesn't address anything about using our facilities to practice the things that you had done over the summer.
Yes, so again, I'll defer to Mark a little bit, but I wouldn't think that those would necessarily be contractual. So we work with both of those departments to do it, but I don't know if they would want to say that they're contractually obligated to do those drills because they're ultimately not working for us in the summertime, although we're doing them all summer and they want to do them and we want to do them, but I don't know if we have a quote contract.
I don't know if you have to put it in here that it makes it obligated to do it, that we'd make facilities available or something to the effect that, for it to happen, because we'd like to encourage that type of a thing.
I mean, I guess my initial thought on that would be, we have done it and we can do it. I'm not sure I see an advantage to memorializing it in the MOU that says they will have the facilities available because there may be times where we'd rather not. So if it's something that we've done and may do from time to time, I just, I don't know that we gain much by, I mean, they haven't asked for a...
My understanding, we did, we do this annually or we plan on doing this annually. And I'm just trying to, if we're memorializing what we do with our SROs, this is a contract that talks about everything that we tend to do with our SROs, then maybe it ought to be in here. Again, I'm not the legal expert or anything like that, but it's, would make sense to me just reading through that, that that be included. And then the last part that I had was, we have an SRO at our board meeting on an annual basis, I'm not sure exactly how that works, but shouldn't that be on here as well?
That is a gift from the sheriff's department.
Just the sheriff's department, not the city.
Yes, and that is something that they provide for us for no charge and not part of a contract.
Okay, well, that would be separate under that, specific with the county. That's a great benefit and I certainly appreciate having them here. Just looking through the rest of the notes here. And this is kind of minor, we talk about using faxes for communication. Do we typically fax anymore? I think it's more email, but.
We could take it out. I agree, faxes certainly am, I want to work, are getting fewer and far between. I do probably, you know, I may get one a month. I probably, I'm not sure it's, I'm quite ready to completely remove it as a form of communication, but I agree, it's certainly on the way out.
And safety committee meetings. We have the SROs, do they attend the safety committee meetings?
The representatives from the departments do. So the contacts that were, that I spoke of earlier, the one from the sheriff's department and from Concord Police come to our safety meetings.
Should that be something that would be in here somewhere where they attend our safety committee meetings or have an invitation to our safety committee meetings? And list of the SROs, I think they provided that to us. Do they do that on an annual basis on who goes where or when they have somebody permanently established? Can they provide us a list on an annual basis of some sort? Does that make, would that make sense?
Yeah, it's just like, like lots of other things, it gets updated a lot. Like right now, you know, they're still filling some elementary positions. The resource officer at Cox Mill High School is changing over with a new assignment. So, I mean, we constantly keep that list and obviously I have the contacts so I can call the schools, but it's, it's always being changed when you have 20 officers.
Right, that'd just be something, it's another one of those memorandum of understandings that they'll provide the list of current officers per school, you know, on a regular basis of some sort. Those are my comments on reading through this thing, so thank you.
All right, board members.
I'm sorry, I have a couple of comments or just a question. The evaluation of SROs, it's in here just briefly, I think. Is there more of a, does the school have a part in the evaluation of that SRO?
Yeah, so the, they are not, SROs are not our employees, so the police agency does the evaluation, but if the supervisor from the sheriff's department will sit with the principal and they will do part of that together, but at the end of the day, the sheriff's department does the full evaluation. So yes, they have a lot of input, but they're not technically the supervisor, if that makes sense.
Does the, does the principal have the right to request a change or is that, does that need to be stated or just kind of an understanding?
The answer to that is, yes, they have the right to request it, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that will happen, just as the SRO can't request a change in the principal and that necessarily happens. So whenever there's an issue, that's where we talked about before, if the school says, well, I'm having a problem with my SRO, then they call me and we kind of work together that sometimes through the agency and then all together, it just depends on the problem. And that works in reverse where police agency calls and says, hey, this is, this is really an issue for us, can we fix it? I would say 99 times out of 100, it's a miscommunication and I pick up the phone and we do it, but we've had to sit down before and have meetings before and we've had officers replaced by both agencies because of problems that was perceived at the school.
And this MOU actually does kind of put some formality around what we've been doing. Article six talks about if you're unsatisfied, if the principal's unsatisfied with the performance, they can document that, try to correct it. And then if it's not addressed, then the principal assistant superintendent can recommend removal from the program, in writing, and then they, the agency, which would be either the city or the county, can respond and either swap them out or explain why they're not. So we've got some procedure.
And I would say for, since I've, since I've been working with this, both agencies have been very responsive to when there was a problem. Like most situations, there's kind of communication and we need to sit down and talk, but they're very responsive to, they do not want us to be unhappy with the officers in the schools and they've been great about that.
All right, board members, should we put this on a consent or action?
Should we put that on action, give Mark a good time, a little bit of time to look through it and see if you want to incorporate any of those comments?
Okay, action. All right, 4.03, we're going to talk about the early college high school calendar. Dr. Lauter?
Yes, I've brought the 15-16 calendar for the rest of the school system before, at the last meeting. Early college calendar is always a little bit different because he is bound by the community college calendar and it's, you know, they're finished with school several weeks before we are. So to a large degree, we just have to make sure that they have the same amount of days and paid days for the teachers. And then Mr. Fishback kind of chooses how to best make that work and we've verified that we have the same amount of holidays, the same amount of annual leave and the same amount of staff development days and he's good with where we're at. So I talked to him again today just to make sure. An example is, we have a holiday for Memorial Day, they will be finished on Memorial Day. So he actually have a holiday on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving that everybody else would have a staff development day. So again, it's just figuring out how to set those around and work and this is the calendar that he recommends, which fits our mandates and the community college mandates.
All right, board members, any comments on the calendar?
Just one.
Mr. Walter?
Just one question for clarification. It shows on the calendar a graduation of May 14th, but it shows the end of nine weeks at May 20th. Does that create any kind of an issue for folks?
No, he comes up with, with some time issues like that anyway and the early college inherently has a waiver for that because of the seat time requirements are different. So you leave that on there because officially it's there, but sometimes there's three or four days in between those and he works around that with his teachers and with students.
Okay, so there's no effect on the student, the seniors?
All right, consent or action? Consent?
Let's go.
All right, 4.04, policy revisions for approval on the first reading. Dr. Lauter, we're starting with, well, we only have one.
Yes.
The role of board members, how interesting is that?
Yes, the first read policy, we hope, is a simple one. That essentially is deleting the last line of the policy, which said the board chair will not appoint or approve more than one board member to serve on any committee. It has been the policy of this board to have, in numerous circumstances, more than one board member. And I think to a large degree, people think that's effective and so we said, well, let's alter that so you can assign more than one board member.
Board members, I'll just weigh in on this. When I was doing the assignments, Ms. Monroe made me aware that this sentence in our policy existed and our past practice has not been to use, to obey this sentence, so I asked Mark if we could go ahead and get it scratched, so I don't think any of you should have any problems with that. Can we put this on the consent agenda?
I had one additional change, Barry.
Okay.
Or suggested change. Under C, number three, follow all procedures established for visits to school instead of visitors to school. Under C, number three, change the word visitors to visits.
Do you see that one?
Board members should coordinate a school visit, notify the principals.
I believe what that is.
All the same procedures as other visitors.
Yes.
There are.
So is that referring to there's a set of procedures for all visitors that we need to follow?
Yes.
And where is that posted usually?
There's actually a policy, right? A visitors to school policy, which we don't know the number right now, but it's, we think the reference there is.
Is that referenced in the bottom here? Public participat...
Nope.
Can you put that reference into this policy?
Yes.
And then we can put it on the consent agenda with that reference, do you think, Rob, since that's what they're talking about? Okay.
Okay, we'll do that.
All right, board members, we'll put that one on the consent agenda. Dr. Lauter will make a change to make sure that the visitors' policy is included in All right, policy revisions on the second reading. We have a host of policies. Let's start with the first one and I'm just going to ask if there's any comments. If there's not, we're going to move on rather than have Dr. Lauter have to review them. On 40-50, children of military families, are there any comments on that particular one? Consent agenda? All right. Discretionary admission. Any issues with that particular one? Hearing none, consent? Okay, I didn't see any heads nodding, I was just, okay. All right, tuition for discretionary admission?
Consent.
Consent? Okay. School assignment? Magnet school?
Action.
Action. All right, let's talk, let's just, we'll come back, can we come back to that one, Mr. Walter? Service animals? Consent? Epinephrine auto injector? All right. Superintendent contract? Consent? All right. Deputy superintendent contracts and all the, consent? All right. School administrator contracts? Consent? Return to work? Consent? Non-career status? Consent? All right, that takes us back to 41-54, board members, if you'll bring that up and I believe Mr. Walter has a comment.
Several comments, I guess, let me open up my notes. As I understand it, the policy committee went back and reviewed some of the discussion that we had last meeting.
Right, so we brought forth what the policy committee had recommended and then there were some suggested changes, so we were directed to take that back to the policy committee. We did that the, was it the next day or I think it was one week later, after that last board meeting. The policy committee then reviewed that in, in reference specifically to the suggested changes, so we tried to go through all of those and then came forth with the recommendation of the policy committee with those recommendations in mind, if that makes sense.
Was that a full policy committee meeting? Because I don't, I didn't know.
Yes. It was the latest one, we pretty much had to have that one to get it in, to have things available for this meeting.
You're saying everybody was there? Is that, was everybody at the meeting?
I have to, I'm not...
The two board members.
Yeah, Ms. Carpenter, Mr. Harrison were there. Dr. Van Hugelum, Dr. Probst, the three principals, Mr. Jolly, Ms. Beard, Ms. Bullock, they were all there. We'd have to look and see, we can look at the minutes, which I think went out, went out with who was there, I'd have to look and see, but essentially, I can't think of anybody that was absent, but there may have been a person or two absent.
Okay, I thought I was, well, I think we'll talk about policy, who's on which policy?
You're on the policy committee.
I didn't know about the meeting at the time.
Based on January 1st.
January 1st, okay.
I know, the meeting was in December.
Yes, yes. Yeah, we had that meeting on Tuesday and then I emailed the changes to the board on December 19th. So they went out.
All right, well, anyway, let's start with the positive because every time this thing goes back and forth to the committee, it seems to get better, which is, you know, a positive thing in my opinion. I did make several suggestions and it appears that, you know, you added, added the additional reports to another board. On an annual basis, we'll be getting reports on how our magnet school program is doing. I think that was a positive change. You've added the application status notice to students, so students will know where they stand on the process when, if they're approved or what number they are on the waiting list and that type of a thing. I think that's positive as well. You've added the response requirement, so now if I get notified that I'm accepted to a magnet program, I have a certain amount of time to respond and say, yes, I'll take the position, take that slot before you offer it to somebody else. That's another positive. And it looks like you've added the review, a review by the superintendent or designated prior to a student being removed from the program. Those are the ones I saw that I had asked or suggested that are added to this program, policy. And I had one question related to that, was on number four, on the, it says, in July of each year, the superintendent designated to provide a written report to the board following the information. Why was July selected?
Ultimately because data, test data, to get test data back, have it and then possibly be able to incorporate that into school improvement plans, I think was the discussion.
Okay.
I would say I had a concern about that as well.
A4?
Yes.
If we could change that to at the end of the school year, there might be times that test data is not available in July.
I just had, I just had suggested annually.
At the end of the school year. That's, when I read it, that was the only, and I should have mentioned that to you earlier, Chris, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Did you ask for it to be changed just to annually?
I suggested annually, but when I read through this thing, it said July and I just had wondered why that, why that had come up.
So just make it annually? Okay, that'd be an easy switch.
And then some of the things that I did not see added and I'm not sure, I suggested we had some, we include some protect, again, that's my, my opinion, but protection from using high-stakes testing is a primary standard for remaining in a magnet program. I didn't see that added or that was not added. I had suggested maybe having, well, I suggested having a similar admissions window for the protection of some middle school students so they don't enter, end up entering at a disadvantage like we have a clause in our high school, high school. And that had to do with the advanced curriculum, you wouldn't want a seventh grader that hadn't taken the advanced math to be all of a sudden put into an advanced math class. So you didn't recommend that.
Yeah, I mean, that, again, I can answer to the best that I can recreate the discussion, but what we have marked there is that what we want to keep STEM, I'd be available to all sixth through eighth in that situation, which is a little bit less at the end of the career, so it's a little more open than it would be at high school because high school is the end of your, your K-12 career.
But we're still, okay. I didn't see any additional clarification on how the lottery process would work or the change in the priority order. I still don't think it made a lot of sense to where you've got rated number three students who are already in the program changing to the new, to a new school are only a third priority. That seemed a little odd to me.
Okay, so what, what number?
This is number five. I think it's number five, right? Is it five? Yeah, it's number five.
Under the...
You have students in the final grade of a magnet program who continue to meet the program's standards are only the third on the list, they probably ought to be first.
Yeah, in regards to the... In regards to the lottery, I'm not sure I can answer specifically. Ms. Smith may have to help me a little bit with how, with processes for the lottery, because some of the things that you suggested, I think, were issues with notification, when people got in, et cetera. And again, these were all things that, some of this was discussed at the last board meeting, I think, with board members, and then we took each one of those to the group to discuss and tried to elaborate when we could.
I think my suggestion was applications would be grouped by the following priorities. Students in the final grade of their magnet school program, fifth through eighth grade, who continue to meet program requirements would be ranked number one, and then number two was qualified applicants who are child of an employee, and then number three was qualified applicants who are sibling that are currently enrolled student.
Yeah, and the, the answer for that from the group was, this is not something that we want to change. We already have a process for the lottery that's outlined in number five, and felt like that covered it.
Let's see. You didn't add the extra protections that would have required interventions to be in place for at least two quarters prior to a student removal. I'd ask, I guess I'd ask for some type of a timeline there.
I think Jeff Phillips said something, and I agree, that like a probationary year, something along those lines as well.
But there's nothing, I'd asked for something that was rejected, I guess, by the committee, I don't.
Well, I think what, what we said, and we're trying to remember and recreate here, Ms. Burns is helping me a lot, is that that's part of the magnet, the agreement that each school would have, because it's going to vary from school to school. Again, high school versus elementary, PLC versus that, so it wouldn't be part of this policy, but it could be part of the agreement that each school presented.
Well, policy, policy didn't say what interventions it is, it just needed to be in place for a period of time to make sure that.
All right, that, that would depend on the program. Because, again, a PLC, sometimes, just, I'm just pulling stuff out of the air, but the expectations in that magnet program are very different from another one, so that is where that would be housed, instead of here, is ultimately what the committee said.
All right. And I didn't see, I think I'd requested some additional guidelines that would cover the process for removing a student to minimize the transition impact of that student. I didn't see any of that stuff was, was included in there either. And for example, we have transportation issues that have to be arranged, coordination with, between the two schools, coordination with the transportation department, coordination with student services, because obviously this is a, potentially affects the student, student emotionally on, on being, you know, removed from our program that they want, that they would like to attend.
And so what is it that specifically you were saying would be mandated?
Would be what?
What, what specifically would be mandated?
You can go back to last month. What, where did I put that?
Yeah, again, I think we said when we were discussing that, is that's part of the intervention program, that's something that, again, the superintendent, designee would review to be able to say, this is appropriate, or, you know, if we're not comfortable with how people are transitioning back and forth, that would be part of how that's agreed upon or not agreed upon.
Yeah, I thought those are kind of separate, but, okay, anyway. Then you did not remove the harsh language, or what I consider harsh language, on some of the, where is this one? You've got two sections in there that, harsh language says, yeah, we remove for not turning in, student will be removed for not turning in the intent to remove form. I don't think that was necessary. I'd ask for that to be taken out. And then there was another one that I had talked about. It was C2 and C4.
Yeah, I mean, we're just trying to, again, recreate what we talked about with the intent to return form, was that, I mean, my understanding, again, from Ms. Smith, is that that's not really an issue. That's, yeah, I hate to call you up, but I can't experience why that's been.
Technically, right now, that's not an issue, because by the time the intent return form goes out, the 1st of December, by the time the schools continue to work with any that they have not received, in this past, this current year, we received all those notifications before break. However, we continue to check until the end of December.
And I think that's great. I just don't think we need to put it in our policy that we're going to remove somebody if they don't turn in their form.
In the past couple of years, we've had some issues that after the magnet process was completed, even though the school had notified several families that they had not returned anything, we did not have the child's name, after we had filled the seats, then those families tried to go back and have a reinstatement of a student after we'd finished the lottery and the actual placement process. The numbers are very, very small on that, but that became a rather difficult part in fixed seats. So that's why we were trying to come up with the exact numbers as we were moving in, because our seats are limited.
I think it's kind of harsh when you read through that.
Are you suggesting, just say, may, may be exited from?
May is a whole lot better than will, yes.
So there's just, create some flexibility in the policy, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes.
Is there, is, is, what does that do to the policy?
I can only base it on our experience right now, and we needed something definite with several families, because right now we have fixed seats. In the day when we have numerous extra seats that are not being filled, that may not be an issue, but what's happening because of the way the time sequence goes, from the time you move intent, you do your application period for January, and then you're doing your placements in February, you don't have extra seats after you start the lottery and you've notified families. And that's the point of contact, when families who've had numerous contacts from the school where the child's placed have not made a response, and the student hasn't either. So we felt like we needed a timeframe there where decisions made, will that family want to return or not? So we felt like, in terms of process, and the schools indicate they've worked very hard with those families just to make sure they got the responses. So currently, the only time that's been an issue would be where there are no seats left, and we've had a couple of families at that point. So the process that we've been using to date has worked fairly well.
Yeah, it's just, this is just a direction, maybe it's a philosophy difference, but I don't think, I think if a child is in a program, we want to keep them in the program, we want to assume that they want to stay in the program, and not go through this, are you, or are you not? If they want, if they want to leave the program, they ought to come to us and say they want to leave the program. But those are my thoughts on this policy. I'd like it on action.
Any other comments on this policy, board members? All right, this one will be on the action agenda for our next meeting. All right. Ms. Klutz is now here, and she is ready to give us a report on the budget process, and you just bailed out Dr. Shepherd.
Excuse me, may I be dismissed? Okay, we're going to do budget amendments, or we're going to do budget process? We have budget amendments.
Your first one was your report on the budget process.
Okay.
So we'll do that one and go in order.
Okay. All right, sounds good. This, this time each year, I like to give you an update of, we're starting our budget process, and just give a quick review of, of where we are and where we're going, to see if you have any questions or any, any tweaks to our process that you want me to, to modify. I'm, you want me to run this? Okay. So on, on the first slide is, I just wanted you to know what the purpose of a budget committee is. I'm not going to read this to you, but sometimes you wonder, what are we doing here, and what's the purpose of our committee? But basically, we come, it's a group of individuals that come together, discuss, and make a recommendation to a greater majority, and that's you, the board, and then we'll, we'll make that recommendation and hopefully approve a budget. Talks about specific groups and goals, and aligning our, our process with our strategic plan, that kind of thing, and so just wanted you to, to have that available to you for the purpose of our, our budget committee. I've started with, wanted to show you who's on the budget committee, and I've broken this out into representing groups. The first, the group is, would be the Board of Education. We have three Board of Education members on the budget committee, and we also have an identified alternate in case one of the budget members cannot, board members cannot be there. So we would expect to have three at, at each meeting. The next group of committee members represent our schools, and I, I won't read those to you. We have principals, and we have teacher rep, and we have a representative from a small elementary school and a large elementary school for the, because we have so many elementary schools. In addition, this group is our county representation, so Mike Downs has agreed to be on our committee, Pam Dubois, and Susan Fairington, all from the county, so we feel like it's, it would be valuable to have them on our committee and to gain insight and information about our budget and our process. In addition, we have community representation, or parent representation, sometimes they are both, they are community and they are a parent. So these are the, the people that we have encouraged to participate in our, in our committee meeting. And then, of course, there is the cabinet representation, the administration here, representing the different areas and departments and schools. Okay. This slide is just a summary of the way that we look at our, our budget request. We have two areas that we focus on. One is expansion, and so that would be increased funding. So if you have a base level of funding right now that you're operating on, anything above that base level would be an expansion request. Continuation, let me go back to expansion. Expansion is new things you want to do, or innovative things that we, we need to branch out and increase. Continuation costs are separate and aside, over to the right, those are items like your increase in health insurance, your increase in salaries, your increase in power and utilities. Those things are, we can't avoid most of those costs. Those costs are going to come regardless of whether we get dollars or not, so we have to make room in our budget for those. And so that's, we'll look at the continuation cost separately. Okay. And this is, these are some just notes, some bullet points that I just wanted to make, make you aware of. We have three members of our board to serve on the budget committee. Our budget committee operates and, and meets four full days, generally 8:30 to 4:30, and so there's a lot of, there's a lot of work and time and effort that's put into these meetings, and, and your participation, or the, the member's participation is greatly appreciated. The administrative team, staff will do as much work as we can, so that we're not holding you four days, is, is a lot of time, and so if we do a lot of prep work, hopefully we can minimize the amount of time that, that the, the committee is there. We have subcommittees, and they will meet as, as many times as, as they need to, to make a recommendation to the budget committee. Your school improvement teams are an example of a subcommittee. So each school has a school improvement team, they would go, they would come together and make the budget request, the principal would submit the budget request for their school. And so that would be an example of a school improvement, I mean, a, a subcommittee. In addition, when you're thinking about our transportation department, they would have a group of individuals that would gather and make a, make a request for transportation, so they have a subcommittee also. We will, during the budget committees, we'll administer budget hearings, and those are the times when our budget committee gets to hear about all of our needs, and the needs that have risen to the top of our priorities. And so we get to hear a lot about the need, and we get to ask questions, and fully, hopefully fully understand and flesh out any questions that we have at that time. We are going to, in this budget committee, we're going to revisit our objectives. Our objectives are some, is a part of TRIGO, in which we prioritize our, our priorities, our projects, and we are going to look and make sure that our objectives are still in line with our strategic plan and what this board wants to accomplish. We have a couple of new board members, and we want to make sure that we're aligned. Okay? And again, we will use TRIGO as a prioritization method to help us through the, the committee. And then, of course, finally, we'll develop a proposed budget to submit as a recommendation to the Board of Education. Okay? I've provided you here with our budget committee dates and our board meeting dates as related to, that we will talk about budget, just for your information. On, we'll have a meeting on Tuesday, January 20th, Budget Committee, Tuesday, February 3rd for Budget Committee, Monday, February 23rd for Budget Committee, and then we'll have the Thursday, March 5th, Budget Committee. And then you'll see, they overlap just a little bit with the budget, the board meetings, but we'll again start the same process, we'll go through the board and share that same information as we discussed it with the budget committee. And so that's all I have. If you have questions or concerns, I'm happy to address those.
All right, board members, are there any questions? Mr. Powell, I see that you're ready to go.
I don't see any athletic department representation on this committee that I know of. Are there, is that a gap that we've created, maybe, or?
I would say that Donna Smith, who's on our administrative team, would represent our athletic department.
Okay. Is it, is it possible to add anybody to that? Maybe an athletic booster's parent, or a Brian Tyson, or?
We did.
Couple of people to represent athletics.
We did extend invitations. Our parent community representatives, Mr. Wilson is a band booster president.
Definitely have band represented on there, for sure.
I think he did. I think he did decline. Okay, Mr. Labsley, he's going to love me, has student athletes, as I understand. And I think we could look at, at our community parent representation and, and find some representation there.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
Yeah, and as we present our information to budget committee, we call other staff in to help us with that. So while as the, the administrative team, the cabinet is, is just the committee member, we certainly have a lot of resources that we pull, and you will see that in the budget committee.
Okay, thank you. I just, something stood out to me.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, well, one of the questions, I know that the board members, a lot of us that are here have been through the TRIGO process, and I was wondering if we were, and now, Tim may already know it, but I was wondering if we were going to have classes for maybe events, the ones that have not been through it, will we be able to offer that to, to those individuals, so they can kind of be up to speed on that?
We can certainly do as the board chooses, but I, we have a trainer on staff these days, whereas we didn't before, and I think we could arrange a meeting where we could bring them up to speed for that.
Tim, have you had, have you been through the TRIGO? I know, well, we know that you're way up there, but I didn't know if maybe. Well, I didn't know with that, or maybe some of the other ones would, would maybe like that, that's, that was.
Certainly, we could do a refresher and bridge training.
Sounds like a winner.
We, we will look into getting something scheduled to make that available to the ones that have not, and anyone that's interested in, in updating their, their knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments on Ms. Klutz's report on the budget process? All right. Well, Ms. Klutz, let's, oh, wait a minute, there you go. Mr. Walter?
I had my chance, but schools, you've got one, two, three, four, five, six folks on, representing schools. Do they have to attend every, every meeting? Is it?
We certainly request that they do, and prefer that they do, but.
Just seems to, a lot of time to be taking them out of, away from their classroom, away from the school.
Right.
Through the process. I mean, I'm sure that their input would be valued, but I don't know if it's necessary to, to take them out of the school for thirty, thirty-plus hours. And then my other thought on the representation, have we invited a commission, county commissioner to be on our committee? be on our committee?
We have, we, two or four years ago, we actually did invite a county commissioner to participate. That did not work out. They were unable to attend any of the meetings. So then we decided to go the direction of administration and felt like administration could share that information with their commissioners.
May be a good time to rethink that.
Okay.
Mr.?
I was actually going to chime in, so while you're on the subject, I was going to ask, Ms. Minnick has been appointed as our liaison, so if you would, reach out to her and give her the opportunity to participate. So that, I just was, while I was waiting for everybody to finish, where I offered that.
And these are public meetings. They're noticed and anyone who would care to come, may come.
And then the other thing that we talked about as board earlier this year is we changed the public hearing instead of before our budgets proposed, and it's now after the budget has been developed. So at least we can get the public's input on what we're actually proposing to the county commissioners. So those are my comments. Thank you, Kelly, for the work and the presentation. Big road ahead.
All right, board members, any other comments on this process? All right, now, Ms. Clutz, you can go to your budget amendments.
We have four budget amendments for you to review today. We'll start with the state budget amendment. And I love it when there are all increases and no decreases. Generally, you're not quite as concerned when we're increasing our revenue. So the first one is just a general reimbursement for substitute salaries, and that's the way the state does it. We pay for the reimbursed, the substitutes, and then they give us the money back. And so that's just a normal reimbursement that we expect. The next one is an allotment for our EC group homes, and those come, you know, throughout the year and occasionally. And so we just book those when we get them. And we pass that on to the group homes and pay the group homes that take care of the children. Then the next one is our school technology fund. This is, we can't predict the amount of money that we're going to get. This is our fines and forfeitures and interest as related to that school technology fund. And so because we can't predict it, we just have to, when we get it, we book it. And so we were fortunate enough to get $160,000 this time, and Dr. Probst can, could talk to you more about, but we have, you know, severe technology needs. And I think I've heard, yeah, I think I've heard the word Chromebooks, you know, from her. And so, and then we have our transportation allotment. This is a normal adjustment. We get a planning allotment at the first of the year and mid-year. After they run all of our numbers for our TD1, they give us, they do a settle up. And so this is an expected adjustment and we get it every year, or we hope to get it every year. We hope that there's an increased settle up. So that's what that is.
Why is that so substantial? Is that?
Why is it substantial?
A quarter million dollars, it's more than a quarter million dollars.
It is. It's because that, there's, the biggest factor that impacts that is our growth from year to year and our ridership from year to year. So that is not in the planning allotments that we get from DPI. DPI takes their pot of money and they give you a planning allotment, and then they determine how much money is left over after they have done their planning allotments. They look at our TD1, which measures our efficiency in transportation, and determine the allocation based on that. So, you know, there's a lot of us that have tried to really understand that formula in doing so, and it is quite complicated. I would invite you, if you'd be interested to attend one of DPI sessions that talk about that formula, but think you'll leave with your head spinning, most of us do. But anyway, that's, I see the biggest factor is our growth and ridership that impacts that number.
So if your school system is lowering student enrollment, you're going to get hit with that too?
That and your efficiency rating. If your efficiency rating went from 97% to 94%, you're going to get hit. And ours does not do that. Ours stays constant and high. And so those are the things, you know, some of the things that go into, but for us, I see that it's growth.
Any other comments on this particular budget document? All right, Kelly.
Okay. The next one is our capital outlay budget amendment, and we're requesting that we take $130,000 from a project that the county funded two years ago, not this current year that we're in, but the previous year, for the T-12 lighting phase out. And we're asking you to move that into a project for yellow buses, cameras for gal buses. We've completed that, the T-12 project to scope, and we have additional dollars left over. And we think the best use of that money is to take care of the cameras on the gal buses.
Any questions on this?
So we finished, excuse me, so we did get all the replacements out and we had that much left over?
We, either that, we've gotten them taken care of, or they're under PO and in the stages of working right now. So we know what the financial obligation is, and yes, that, those dollars are available to spend.
Oh, okay. So we did get them all replaced, though?
We did.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
How many cameras?
How many cameras?
Fifty-two.
Oh, excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So our next budget amendment is.
Whoa, excuse me. Will that cover all our buses now?
I believe that that is all of our yellow buses. I'm not sure if that is our activity buses, and I'm sorry, I don't have Dan here. No, it does not include all of our activity buses, but it does take care of the yellow buses. And so that would be, you know, that's our, obviously, that's a concern and that's what we want to do, but, you know, funds are limited. All right, so the next budget amendment is, is, I need to turn the page, child nutrition. And this is something I think you'll be interested to know. What we're doing here is we're increasing the amount of direct, indirect costs that we receive from child nutrition, and we are decreasing the repair budget in child nutrition. The reason that we do that is with child nutrition and the bidding requirements, you have to have three bids for anything that you purchase. So if it's a $50 item, we have to have three quotes, three bids. And you can imagine how much time that takes our staff to get that, the bidding. And so the transportation depart, the child nutrition department, finance department, and the maintenance department all work together to find a way to legally avoid getting those three bids and saving the time. And so what we were advised that we could do is that, because I don't, I don't charge the cap of indirect costs for child nutrition, is we could raise the indirect cost rate, put that money over in a pot, and then we'll buy it under the board's policy. And that's, you don't have to get bids unless you're $5,000 or higher. So all of those $200 items or $50 items, it really does not make sense to spend the labor time going out and bidding those things. You don't save enough money to do that. So by doing this, just, you know, taking the money out of child nutrition, putting it over into a pot, and then buying those repairs out of that, we're saving a significant amount of time and dollars associated with that.
Questions?
Who came up with that solution?
Who came up with that solution? I think it was Frank and Frank Fiorelli, and I don't know, but Frank proposed.
I'd certainly like to commend Frank and his staff for creative thinking.
Absolutely. Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yeah, but my question is, you can't tell me, though, what you're going to spend that, and that's my question. What is that 96, you can't tell me what you're actually buying with that $96,000 now. In other words, you can't tell me that not, that $96,000 is going to go to XYZ School and what that $96,000 is going to pay for.
I can tell you that it's paying for the same thing that it was in this pot that it is paying for this pot. We're just getting it cheaper. And so what we were buying when it was in the child nutrition fund is an alternator for a refrigerator. I don't know if, I don't know if refrigerators have alternators, but it sounded good, right? Yeah, apparently it doesn't. You know, the repairs and the pieces that we fix, the machines in the kitchens, that number was based on the budget that we currently have in the child nutrition. We're not spending any more. We hope we're going to spend less because it's really more about the time, the labor that we're saving, and not so much the actual product.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, what I'm basically saying is, though, if I asked you, okay, you give me a detail of that 96, you know, right now, you're asking me to approve $96,000 to say, approve $96,000 to spend $96,000, but you can't give me a detail of what that $96 is being spent for. In other words, normally, and I'm used to having a budget amendment with details over here of what that $96,000 is for, but you can't tell me what that $96.
You've already approved it to be spent. And now we're just moving it to another account to get more flexibility in how it's spent, but it'll be exactly the same.
And it's no different than when you approve a budget for facilities, and we have a line item in facilities that's called repairs, repair parts. And that's what this line item is. It's the same line item within child nutrition that we're now going to hold in a little pocket, and we're going to spend it the exact same way. If we bought a screw, we're going to buy a screw. You know, if we're going to, if we buy a refrigerator door, we're going to buy a refrigerator door. It's the exact same thing. I'm not asking you to spend $96,000 in one fell swoop. This is just normal maintenance that we're going to do over the rest of the fiscal year.
And Ms. Carpenter, this is an estimate of what we think we will spend on repairs. We're going to keep a line item of everything that's spent, but there could be money at the end of this year that's not spent in that account. But this is a really smart way to help us get around, if it was a $15 item, we had to go out and get three bids. This will stop us from having to do that, but we will have everything documented.
But, you know, when they ask for those, but there was a reason why they made people go out and get those three bids. I mean, the reason that people made people go out and get the three bids is to make sure that you were getting the very best price.
So let me.
And what gets me, it worries me when you're trying to find a way to get around that. Are we still getting that best price? And that concerns me because you're sidestepping the reason you went out and got bids like that. Now, how are we sure we're going to get those very best prices? And that's what concerns me. We're sidestepping the reason you went and got three bids.
So let me talk about a couple of different points there. So the first thing I think that you need to know is everything has been run by DPI and their child nutrition director, the person that heads up that department. She was in total, she thought this was a wonderful idea and thought that this is what we should do. They're the one that monitors what we do and how we do it and if we're following the guidelines. And so with that part said, you, as, to be efficient and effective with our money, we have to monitor the value that we're getting. And if we're spending, just say, an average employee with benefits, you know, makes $25 an hour, $30 an hour, and then it took that employee an hour to get three bids. So that part was $30. We have now doubled our cost in the labor that we've associated with that. So we could have paid double for that part had we not had to get the bids. And that's what we see over and over again. And that's why this board has established a policy of over $5,000 is when you go out and get effective bids. And it's, it's really cost-effective. I'm one that, I think bids are great. I see the value of them. I see the dollars that we save, but at 20 and $30 a pop, we are wasting money. And this is a way to make it better. This is a way to save the money, use the money on the parts and the things that we need to in the child nutrition department. We are being efficient with our dollars.
As long as we, like I say, I just don't want to sidestep something because, as I mentioned before, that's why those things are put in place, so we make sure that we're not. And I don't want to come back and us be bidding the backside because we sidestepped something. So I go on the record saying that, and I can tell you, I will watch, so.
We have full, full knowledge of all of our authorities that have a hand in this.
Okay. All right, that's my comment.
Well, let me just build on what she, what Ms. Carpenter is saying. On the facility side, how do we deal with consumables? Mr. Taylor, can you inform us, do you have a limit, do you, when do you start performing free bids for consumable parts, with $50 parts or $100 parts or?
That's, that's actually $5,000, sir, but it's also discretionary. If it's a part that we feel that the bidding process will gain us a better cost, we'll do it. In this case, we're talking about items that are cost of, generally speaking, $300 or less. It is absolutely more cost-effective to have those technicians doing their job and fixing equipment rather than running down three quotes for a $25 part.
All right, so let me understand the process, and I think that will help clear this out. One of our technicians is doing this bidding process? Is that?
They're gathering the three quotes, yes, sir.
So our technician, rather than doing what he's specialized in, fixing things, is becoming a purchasing agent?
We do not have a logistician, so to speak, that handles this for the technicians. The technicians do the footwork of gathering the quotes, and that's where the problem was identified. We're wasting man-hours and costs associated with those man-hours, as Ms. Clutz just got through telling you about, trying to find these three quotes. The other issue we run into, most of these parts that we're trying to procure are all made by one manufacturer. So we're going to three people who are getting the part from the same person. One person's going to have the best price 99% of the time. So it gets to the point where the other guys won't even give us a quote. Now we can't get the three quotes that we need in order to buy the part, so we're kind of in a catch-22. This answers all those problems. This is much more efficient. And because we're going to this system, we're working more closely with child nutrition. We're going to track the parts better than we were before, and now we're going to start moving into that preventive maintenance program that we talked about and start including trend tracking, parts failure, failure analysis. All of that is coming about because of this compromise, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think Dr. Shepherd wants to say so.
And I'm not sure of the answer, Mr. Minnick answered the question before I asked it, but I'm not sure about this one. So if we're fixing a refrigerator with the refrigerator door that Kelly brought to our attention, and we're going to fix it with money that's available to you through the local budget.
Yes, sir.
If it's below $5,000, we don't have to do the bid.
Yes, sir.
But if we're using federal money that has been assigned to child nutrition, then we have to go out and get three bids.
That is.
So all we're asking is to have the same flexibility with the federal money that the board already allows us with the local money.
Absolutely.
I love it when I write.
All right, board members, do we have any more questions about this particular budget item? Is that it?
We'll have one more.
Thank you.
Okay. And so the final one is our Fund Eight, our local special fund. And so the first item that you see is when we take it from child nutrition, we have to put it into our local fund. And so you see that same $96,000 coming in, into that account, so that we can spend those dollars. And the next one is just assembly or reclassify, moving funds from one area to the other for our Head Start program. And then the bottom one is to record our Jimmy Johnson grant that we received at Rocky River.
All right, board members, you've seen the budget amendments. Is that consent or action?
Jeff and David aren't here, action.
Okay. Okay. All right. All right, board members, we've reached that wonderful time of night, and I need a motion that we adjourn.
I would make a motion that we adjourn.
Ms. Carpenter makes the motion, and Mr. Powell seconds it. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None opposed? Let's go, meeting's adjourned.